All right, I called a meeting, called the order of the meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission for January 13th, and we'll start with the roll call. Laurie, will you take care of that, please?
Ms. Yoshimura?
Here.
Ms. Dean? Mr. Mulcahy?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Robinson? Mr. Spring?
Here.
Mr. Strike? Ms. Barker? Thank you.
All right, so we do have some agenda reordering, so why don't we take care of that now?
Mr. Chairman, on item D4, case 2014-005, Ravens Roost Cohousing, I move we postpone that to February 3rd, 2014.
Can you hit your motion so I can get a second on that?
I'm gonna, it's gonna be a longer motion, because I'm gonna make them all, no?
No, we gotta do one at a time, all right, sorry.
I make a motion, I have a second.
So I have a motion to postpone case 2014-005, the Ravens Roost Cohousing, and I have a second, Commissioner Spring, is there any objections to postpone, and seeing and hearing no objections, that motion has passed. Mr. Ferguson?
Case 2014-001, petitioner Justin Green, I make a motion, we postpone that to 213-23, 2014.
Yes, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have made that clear on the Ravens Roost, that is until February 3rd, I'm sorry, you made that motion, I did not clarify that. So now I have a motion for case 2014, Justin Green postponing to the same date, February 3rd. I have a second, Commissioner Yoshimura, do I have any objections, discussion? None, that motion passes, so Ravens, excuse me, Justin Green rezoning B3 General Business District is postponed till February 3rd. Mr. Ferguson?
Continuing, 2013-002, Anchorage School District amending a site plan for public facilities, I make a motion, we postpone that to 2010, to, to February 10th, 2014.
Hit your motion button, please. Thank you, I have a motion to postpone Anchorage School District amending a site plan until February 10th, and I have a second, Commissioner Yoshimura, do we have any comments? Is that the one you were interested in, ma'am?
I have to, I have to, I have to.
That's postponed until February 3rd?
No, that's-
No?
No, resolution?
We'll have up here shortly.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay. Yes, that's the, we are gonna take care of that one. All right, so are there any objections, any comments on postponing school district? Seeing and hearing none, that motion passed.
Erica.
Yes, sorry.
I wanted to comment that at our director's meeting last week, I indicated that the school district case would be coming up in the first meeting in March, as it turns out, I was unaware that they had not finalized the, the date that they wanted to request to postpone to, and so it turns out, they wanted to request to postpone to February 10th, so I did give you inaccurate information last week.
And they got everything in, so it looks like it's actually gonna happen on the 10th?
I think so, yeah.
They thought there was some question whether they had all their stuff together. We'll plan on the 10th, and if it changes, we can adjust.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, so now we have the agenda set, so let's go on to the minutes, we have no minutes, so any disclosures? Commissioner Yoshimura, would you ask for disclosures, please?
Uh, yes, Ms. Barker.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Ferguson?
None.
All right, Commissioner Spring?
I have none.
Uh, Chair?
No, none here, ma'am.
Um, and I have none, thank you.
All right, so we are good, now we're on to the consent agenda, we only have the one item remaining on the consent agenda, is anyone interested in pulling the consent agenda, resolution 2014-001?
I'd like to pull item D1A, please.
All right, so that being the only item on the consent agenda, the, we have nothing further, so there's no consent agenda to approve, so we are on to the case that you pulled, Commissioner Ferguson, can you make a motion, and then-
I, I just asked to, to pull this, to make sure we were all on the, the same item, because there were four versions of this floating around today, and I just wanted to make sure we were on, um, the version that, that was handed out to us tonight.
So the laid-on-the-table version that was in front of me is the one that we received by email at 9:10 this morning? That's the one, okay, everybody's got, that's, that's the one that's laid on the table, that's the one, if you got the email at 9:10, you've had a chance to review it, okay? Everybody understand, Mr. Ferguson's?
Because I pulled it, do I make a motion?
You have to make a motion to put it-
I make a motion that we approve resolution, uh, on case 2014-001, as prepared.
Motion button, please, so they can second. I have a motion to approve, I have a second from Commissioner Barker. Any discussion on that, other than making sure we're on the right page?
No, no, sir.
Any other discussion? Any comments, any changes? Everyone okay? Seeing and hearing no objection, that one passes. Uh, thanks, everybody, for, that was a challenge.
Would you please exit quietly?
If the crowd will please contain themselves, and, and please leave quietly, so we don't disrupt the meeting, we have more business to-
He's so funny.
No, seriously, thanks, everybody, for the help on that one, I, I know that was a tough resolution to get done, and real good feedback. Okay, so where are we at, then? Regular agenda, so we're on public hearing-
I think you're on G3.
G3, municipal, I mean, Ms. Ma'Am Anchorage, review of the Design Criteria Manual. Staff, do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce Mr. Steve Schrader, who's to my right, he is the municipal engineer, and, um, is it fair to say you're in charge of the Design Criteria Manual? That's generally the idea.
That would be correct.
Uh, as you are aware, the municipal assembly passed a resolution, um, late, late last year, directing the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the 2007 Design Criteria Manual to hold a public hearing and to submit written recommendations to the assembly. Um, while the commission's recommendations based on that resolution are due by February 11th, it's my understanding that, um, the commission chair and various assembly members have discussed that that's not a hard and fast deadline. Um, Mr. Schrader asked me to make a couple of clarif, minor clarifications in this memo, and I'm happy to do that, unfortunately, we were not able to communicate before this went out to you, but he wanted me to clarify that the DCM is not enforced by the, um, Project Management and Engineering Division, and neither is it technically adopted, but rather implemented by the Department of Public Works. He also asked me to clarify that the committees that are working on the rewrite to the 2000 DCM are chapter-specific committees, there's not one committee doing each chapter, um, the revisions of each chapter are done by different committees, be, with different specialties. Um, at the commission's lunch with the director last week, uh, the commission did discuss a plan of action, which of course, you're free to deviate from today, but I just wanted to remind you that the commission discussed, um, not actually making any recommended changes to the 2007 manual, with the exception, perhaps, of recommending that there be an appeal process, but instead, leaving, kind of letting the 2000 manual lie, and, um, having the, the chapters that are being rewritten, um, this, you know, right now, come before the commission, so that the commission can then weigh in on those chapters, rather than going back and changing a manual that's soon going to be out of date. Um, so, I think the, the commissioners who were present at that lunch, and the staff who was present, felt that that was a good idea, and of, of course, again, you can deviate from that plan, but that was what was discussed. For all kind of content issues and questions, I, I do defer to Mr. Schrader, he's an engineer, I'm not, and with that, the matter lies with you, thank you.
Stevie, I'm sorry, what, your last name again, I'm sorry. Schrader? Anything you wanted to add to Erica's comments?
My name is Steve Schrader, S-H-R-A-D-E-R, and I'm with Project Management and Engineering, um, I'm the engineering manager and acting municipal engineer.
Anything else you want to comment for, to, anything Ms. McConnell said? Okay.
Probably not, not at this point.
How much trouble, again, if I don't read the public hearing? I, I have to open it.
You have to.
Do I have to read the rules? All right, I will read the rules, then. All right, the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is, colon, one per end. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules or procedure. First, petitioners, including all his or her representatives, have 10 minutes. Part of the time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, have five minutes, and individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission, you may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights related to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. So, public, did you have a question of staff there?
I did, earlier.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I have to read this, this is not, so if you want-
So, I-
Go ahead.
Well, obviously, there is no one here, um, I am aware that the DCM is being discussed at the Rabbit Creek Community Council, and at Halo, and at, um, the Birchwood, uh, uh, Community Council as well, and so, um, it would be my recommendation, um, that we keep the public hearing open, um, I believe attendance at a lot of different community councils has been low, uh, in the last month or two, due to the holidays, and so, my recommendation would be that we keep the public hearing open, so that we can take testimony on this at a future time. Table it. Mm-hmm. So that's my motion.
All right, Commissioner Ferguson?
Uh, the way I understand, the way I understand Ms. Yoshimura's motion was that we would now open the public hearing, and we wish to, um, table or suspend the continuation of the public hearing, until we can obtain more information, at which time we would reopen the public hearing, is that?
Well, I think we just keep the public hearing open.
Continue the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing, mm-hmm.
All right, I have a motion, and a second, the motion is to open the public hearing, and then at the, at the conclusion of hearing, anyone that shows up here tonight, then we would just leave it open, and we will have our recommendations, and I have a second to that, so, are you done in the queue, or are you back in?
I've got a question for staff.
All right, Commissioner Spring?
Yeah, regarding the motion, uh, point of clarification, that means that we can't make a, a motion for any approval or disapproval at this point, or any motion whatsoever, until the public hearing's done, so it basically, or precludes any motion we can make. Question?
Um, I don't know the answer to that, because I know Commissioner Ferguson had suggested, uh, going into the committee of the whole, which I do believe that we can do after the staff presentation.
Yeah, and I think either way, we can either go into commissioner whole, or we can just make a motion to send a resolution to the assembly.
I'm not sure how we can do that without having all the information from the public to take into consideration.
Ms. McConnell?
I think it's inappropriate for the commission to, um, pa, to make a recommendation if the public hearing is still open, and the intent is to gather comment from the public, and, you know, have that inform, potentially inform your deliberations and your recommendation. Um, I'm gonna check the code, to see whether it does discuss this.
Mr. Chairman, could we not, uh, send a memo to the assembly, giving them a report of what we plan to do, so they know the action we're taking, so that they can be informed as to our course of action? It's not necessarily taking action, but it's informing the, uh, assembly that, of our intentions.
A memo vice a resolution?
Yeah.
That may be the, what Ms. McConnell confirm, whether it's a, I think it's, the effect's the same, whether it's a resolution or a memo, is what just will need to get clarified. All right, while she's checking, why don't I go ahead and open public hearing? Everybody okay? All right, public hearing, anyone interested to speak, please step forward, thank you very much, um, we're going to table public testimony for now, and then, let's, um, why don't we go ahead and start working on whether, well, we got your main motion on the floor still, so we gotta find out if that's the right. Yes, go ahead, Erica.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the, the code of regulations, which does talk about process and procedure, is really silent on this issue, but the intent of the public hearing is to allow the public to weigh in, and the Planning and Zoning Commission's role is to consider comments from the public before you make your recommendation to the assembly, so I, you know, I, I think it's fine to have your, to have some discussion tonight, but I do think it is inappropriate to pass a, a recommendation on this case while the public hearing is still open.
So, you believe it's inappropriate to give a memo to the assembly outlining our intended course of action, so that they can weigh in if they think we should take a different direction?
I wonder whether such communication could happen more informally with, uh, the chair and, and the Ms. Johnston, who was the original sponsor of the resolution?
I, I think that most of the communication, but the, um, the main thing we want them to do is, if they want, well, we recommend they don't do anything with 2007, but, um, impose a, or implement a appeal process, and then focus on 14, correct, any other comment?
Right, I mean, but, we need to have that discussion, to see how the commission, um, commissioners feel about that sort of thing. It seems to me that, um, Erica, although I respect your knowledge of the code immensely, and you certainly have a lot of experience with it, it doesn't seem to me, it seems to me that it would have more influence if the commission wrote a memo, and said that, due to the timing of this public hearing, and the fact that a lot of information, although the 2007, uh, Design Criteria was on the website, there was a lot of misunderstanding about the two chapters that didn't get on the website, until just last Friday, it seems like to me. Now, I didn't check, that's what I was told, but I think it's important for us to respond in a timely manner, and I think, uh, to the assembly, I think it's important that we do that, I don't care what vehicle we do, but I would rather see that in writing than just verbally.
Commissioner Spring?
Um, I guess I don't have, I, I can see the distinction between a memo and a resolution, um, I'm just wondering, though, if, as you suggest, there might be some testimony later, what we would do with that testimony, when it comes in? Would we change our direction about, that we give to the assembly? Would we do a resolution based on that testimony? I'm not sure what we would, how we would handle that new testimony.
Since you got your access plan, that's exactly what we did, we had a public hearing, we weren't happy with the disclosure, we suspended it, we asked staff to make a, a new mailing, we did a new mailing, we got a new arena full of people in, we took additional testimony, and we made a decision on the testimony we received in total, which is what we're gonna do ultimately here, I believe, but I, I do believe it's totally correct, and I draw a distinction between a memo and a resolution, a memo is for information only, a resolution basically has the authority of law behind it, and so I, I think we should close, or suspend the public testimony, and then outline our intention in a memo to the assembly, and then we should continue, and we're so short, I don't care whether we call it committee of the whole, or what, uh, have a discussion of what we do going forward.
Yep. Another possible option is, is we open the hearing on 2007, could we close 2007, and then in the memo, or the, then form a resolution, saying we're on 14?
I don't know if we- I'm not, I'm not prepared to close 2007, I've not had a review, inadequate time to review all of the documents, I'm not, I'm not prepared to do that.
All right, Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I do note that if you, uh, continued the public hearing on February 3rd, took any public comment, made a motion, passed, you know, passed, made a recommendation, we could get your resolution to you to sign on the 10th, which would, and get it to the assembly on the morning of the 11th, so it is possible to do it kind of formally, um, through the process. If you would prefer, I'd be happy to draft up a memo, and, you know, email it out in the next day or two.
Commissioner Spring?
Um, well, yeah, I guess my concern is, are we confusing the public? I mean, are they gonna be coming out, making comments, or expecting to make comments, and treat it like, oh, well, you have, you're listening to this, from new information, and you're making a decision based on that, when in fact, we've already really made our decision, um, if, as expressed in the memo, and it's just, to me, it seems like we're asking people to come out and testify, when we're not really, um, gonna consider that in form of a change in our, our memo, or our thinking in the process.
I'm perfectly prepared to change my mind, based upon public testimony, as I think most commissioners, or all commissioners are, um, for which I have done on more than one occasion, actually, after public testimony.
Commissioner Barker?
I concur with Commissioner Spring, I think it's disingenuous to send a memo or formal communication to the assembly in advance of actually having public, public notice. Also, I want to raise a point of order, um, is the motion in fact to table, or, or are you postponing to time certain?
The motion that I have is to postpone it indefinitely.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I think the process is, is to table it for, and to see if that passes, and then address whether or not we want to send any comments on, um, to the assembly after a discussion in the committee of the whole.
All right, so the motion on the table is to table public hearing on the 2007 version, so give us time to review the chapters. All right, so let's vote on, on the motion. All right, so that one fails, all right, so, um, what is the wish of the body? Should we go into the committee of the whole, so we can just have a little more open discussion?
I make a motion, we go to the committee of the whole.
Kinda have a second, any objection to going to the committee of the whole? All right, so, um, we are now in the committee of the whole.
I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Spring, or Commissioner Barker, to put forth, oh, I mean, we're, we're in this trap together, with five of us, we've gotta have all five, one way or the other way, and so I, I'm wide open to any suggested out, you know, movement out.
Commissioner Spring?
Well, I only voted against the motion to postpone, I'm not against discussing it and, um, sending the, a memo, or, um, a resolution to the assembly regarding my thoughts on, on the 2007, uh, Design Criteria Manual. As an option, I would consider, um, postponing, like, um, the, um, public testimony until February 3rd, as the staff has mentioned, that's possible, that, uh, we can consider the testimony, write the memo, or, or pass a resolution, and still get it in front of the assembly in time. That way we could do it in, in a good sequence, I think, a proper sequence, which I think we should-
But, but we've received information from assembly members, that the, the 11th date is not a hard and fast date, and so, we're going through a lot of motion here, and I don't think we're gonna have any more test, public testimony on February 3rd, we've got another short board on that night, um, I'm not in favor of kicking the issue down the road, um, I, I, I would vote against that, because I think the February 3rd date is unrealistic, and with a short board, any one of us can kill any of them.
I, I propose two options, one was to just go into the, um, committee as a whole, discuss it, make our decision, and forward it to the assembly now.
I'm not, I'm not ready to do that.
I'm not either.
Understand, okay.
I, I, I'm not sure I understand the, uh, what the problem is.
I'm not ready to debate the Design Criteria Manual this evening, and if I'm gonna, if we're gonna pass the motion, I think that's what you're asking us to do.
Well, I think what we would, the motion, or the content would be that we, there was no public testimony on the 2007 version, we recommend the assembly not adopt the 2007 version into regulation as proposed, they hold off and wait for the 2014 version, the 2007 version, they would, should require, even as is, it, it should be modified to immediately adopt an appellate process, then we can do a chapter-by-chapter review of the 2014, which is involving public comment, as, as those chapters are being reviewed in, with public comment, we could do a chapter-by-chapter, doing public, public comment, um, notice public comment with a subcommittee, um, and then, and we would focus on adapting the, ensuring that the 2014, we have a recommendation on where that fits in the hierarchy of, of code, and that it includes a good, um, description of the processes involved, and especially in the appeal process, and, also, I'm sorry, backtrack one, where it fits in the documents, not only with the Anchorage documents, but also how they relate to the state documents.
I, I mean, I, we were given instructions to work with the 2007 DCM, um, we're reaching, possibly beyond our authority, to go to 2014, and so I would like to, and Erica's waving her hand a second, um, um, you know, I, I think we're all in agreement, that we should spend our time and effort on 2014, and I think, and I think that's what we're trying to get to, we just don't, haven't figured out a path yet.
Yep, and you said we need to know what we're, they've asked us to look at 7, and we need to give them a response on 7, and then direct them, that really, the time is better spent on 14.
Yeah.
Erica, you have something?
I just wanted to clarify, in case there was any confusion, this case, 2014-002, is only the 2007 DCM, so, assuming that other chapters of the revisions, the 2014 revisions are referred to the commission, they will come as new cases. Okay, I just didn't, thank you.
My concern with 2007 is, passing it right now, without an appeals process, would be inappropriate, and I, I would, uh, um, struggle mightily to, to, to make sure it did not pass, unless there was an appeal, appeals process, and we don't have one prepared to talk about or lay on the table.
Kenny, you in?
Well, the DCM is a very, very large document, and we have, uh, comments here from DOT, asking for clarification on more than one, uh, item, recommendation for further study, request clarification, request new options, request check of design vehicle, request shall reconsideration. I'm not prepared to, um, vote on the 2007 Design Criteria Manual, without further time to study this document, whether it's in a work session, uh, or whether it, uh, includes public testimony or not, I'm, I'm not prepared to do anything with 2007. This is too important to document, we spent hundreds of hours on Title 21, which has to do with surface issues, when, when I say- When I say surface, I mean it has to do with everything above the road. The Design Criteria Manual has to do with everything underneath the road, including the road, which is a lot more expensive than, than some of the issues that we had to address in Title 21. So I'm not prepared tonight, with public testimony or without public testimony, to vote to approve the 2000, to pass the 2007 DCM onto the Assembly. These comments that are from DOT, I mean frankly, I've been on the Commission five and a half years. I've never seen another agency really have so many comments asking for further clarification. There are numerous issues here that need to be addressed. Shall versus should, the no appeal process that we've already talked about, why are the municipal standards greater than the DOT standards for roads that go through Anchorage? I'd like to know what the process is in other areas and other communities. I'd like to know more about how it interfaces with Title 21 and Chapter 10. There's lots of issues here that I'm simply not willing to deal with at this particular point in time. If this, if this Commission votes on the, I'm just not, I can't vote for 2007 Design Criteria Manual.
I totally agree. I mean, that's one reason I didn't want to postpone it, because I won't be prepared, I'm sorry, take your spot. I wouldn't be prepared in February 3rd, I probably wouldn't be prepared March 3rd. This, I was starting to read the 2007 today and got into it, and I also have many questions about it, and I don't think, and I read the Department of Transportation's comments and realized it's just a big can of worms. We could spend our whole life doing this, and it doesn't seem necessary to be, in light of the fact that they're redoing it anyway, 2014, to do it twice. We'd, we'd expend a lot of energy going through, making suggestions, and then just turn it around and redo it again. So I'm not, I would not vote for recommending approval of 2007 at any time.
So I think we're all in agreement, we just got to figure out the vehicle to do that.
I think so.
Mitzi, I think you're in agreement, right? We don't want to do, we want to recommend that the municipality not adopt it into, into regulation.
I got an idea.
Go Jim.
Why don't we suspend public hearing? Why don't we suspend action on Case 2014-002 until we can have a couple of work sessions to get it resolved? And then, in the meantime, we can get the Assembly on board, and we can accomplish what we all want to do. And now, if I can, you know, if that will work, I mean, all I'm trying to do, nobody has said they want to make a decision tonight, so we all want more time, so let's just suspend it.
We all want more time, we don't want to waste it on 07.
Right.
I'm just, I'm not addressing that right now. We can address that in one session.
Mitzi, you're in agreement?
Yes.
We want to recommend to somebody not do anything with 07, let us focus on 14. Jim, you're in agreement? John, you're in agreement? Connie, you're in agreement? So how, what's the best way?
I think we just suspend and ask for a work session. Yeah. You know, I think, I wasn't able to be at the, at the Director's meeting when the DCM was discussed last week, but, or the week before. But the other thing that makes me uncomfortable is, we do have a full board now, or we will have a full board shortly, and this is too important to document for just five of us to.
The main thing that came out at, Erica, or John, you were there, Mitzi, you were there, if I misspeak, please correct me, but the main thing that came out was that Ron said that George Vekalos has agreed that yes, an appellate process is one of the subcommissions, so he's directed Ron to do the, but that's really the only thing new that came out of that work session, so.
Well, the Assembly can do that on their own, then. They really don't need us in order to do that.
Well, the appeals process is really not substantive in terms of the design criteria, it's procedural. It's really, to me, it's out of our realm.
Yeah, we asked, when Ron was here at the work session here, we don't, that he should add an extra chapter or whatever that, that outlines the processes and procedures to include an appellate procedure. And so he took that to George Vekalos, and George said, yeah, that makes sense, so apparently. So that's moving. All right, so I think we're in violent agreement here, so now we need to come up the right way of doing it.
About the work session, I just want to clarify what the purpose of the work session is. It's on 2007 DCM, right? Or is it on 2014 DCM?
The works that we had are the future ones.
The future one. What is it, which, which version is it on?
That's the issue here. We're trying to figure out.
If we have it on 2014, I'd be all in favor of it.
Yeah.
If it's on 2007, that, we might get information that's going to be changed.
We can't do that tonight, John, because it hasn't been public noticed. We can take action on 2007. We agree we're going to be taking more public testimony down the road, and so, don't, I'm just trying to solve the problem tonight in a way not to make it. So I move, I'll make a, if I can get enough nods, because I need everybody, I see Erica has got her hand up, but I'll.
You have to come out of the Committee of the Whole before you can make a motion.
Yes, but he can tell us what the motion will be while we're still in the Committee of the Whole, then we'll come out of motion and make the motion.
Yeah, no, I, that's exactly what I'm trying to do, is, okay, make a motion that we postpone action on 2014-002 until we've had a couple of work sessions in the future. I'm not, I'm not going any further than that, and I understand, because I don't think we've got the authority to go to 2014 yet, and I just, I'm just trying to work our way out of this nest we got ourselves into already.
John, you want to?
Oh yeah, I have no objection to having a work session on 2007. When we have the work sessions, we'll learn a lot about the Design Criteria Manual, which might be useful for when we get into 2014. I don't think it's going to result in any recommendations, however, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, even if we have, you know, 10 work sessions, because we would make a recommendation to make changes that may be already being made on it. So I wouldn't want to make any recommendations on 2007, even after the work session. Even though, if you convince me that it's a good idea just to get a feel for the Design Criteria Manual as background information, then I'll go along with that, if you think that's the, a good reason for that.
I think that's a very good reason. Most of us are not very familiar with the Design Criteria Manual. We're not very familiar with the challenges that it has. It's an extraordinarily, in my opinion, important document, and I do think it is the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission, because the Assembly has asked us to do that. My position is even stronger than that. I believe if you read the duties and responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission as required in the Charter, you will find that there are numerous things that we can initiate and address and make recommendations to the Assembly on. So I think it's well within our purview, and I am in favor of Commissioner Ferguson's motion for work sessions.
I'm, I'll probably vote in favor of it. I just want to clarify one other thing, though. If we have a work session, can we receive like letters from community councils during that time, just for information purposes?
Yeah, and they're publicly noticed.
Then we've got to take into, into that into account without having to reopen the public hearing, that would be good.
All right, so if we came out of the Committee of the Whole, and Jim made this motion, it looks like, Mitzi, you're fairly comfortable with this?
I did not mean to imply that I felt that the entire DCM was beyond our purview.
No, I, no.
I meant only the notion of an appeal process. So I mean, I think I can go along with this. I would hope that the work session would be background, as John said, leading us into what's going to be a more robust public process with the 2014 model.
And I think during that interim, I can have further communications with the Assembly to make sure that they understand what we're doing. But, so it sounds like that, that once we come out, Jim will make that motion, that's probably going to pass. What about communicating what we're doing to the Assembly? Do we need, do you want to go on formal, a formal document?
Right now, it's.
Or do you want me to just be talking with Jennifer, or you want, how do you want to move forward?
I want to make sure I get five votes, so I'm not going to want.
Right.
I think your motion's going to pass, but do we want?
Yeah, but if I start adding to it, I might lose one vote, and I don't want to risk that.
No, I didn't.
You're a good communicator.
I wouldn't say that as a motion.
Sheriff O'Kay, you're a very good communicator. Go talk to Jennifer.
Vote on that, and they have to go back in the Committee of the Whole, trying to get all the business done. So that, and then, I can talk to her and find out if they want something from us in the interim, or if they're just comfortable with that. Is that?
Yeah.
Are you okay from that? Mr. Ferguson, you want to make a motion?
I do. First of all, I'll make a motion we come out of the Committee of the Whole.
Correct, thank you, sir.
And then I'd like to.
I have a second for Commissioner Miosh Muria. Is there any objection to come out of the Committee of the Whole? If not, Planning and Zoning is reconvened. Mr. Ferguson, you have a motion you wish to make?
I'd like to make a motion in the matter of Case 2014-002 that we suspend the public hearing, and that we also suspend action on this, or actually table this, until we'd have the opportunity to have a couple of work sessions on it.
Is table the right word?
I think so.
Just table, till such time as a work session?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good. All right, so I have a motion to suspend the hearing and table action until we've had work sessions. And I have a second for Commissioner Miosh Muria. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, that passes.
I have a question for Mr. Schrader, if I may.
Mr. Schrader, you still there? Are you as confused?
I'm still, I'm, as always, I'm confused. I am still here.
Erica, you're coming to where we're at? We got, we can get this resolution? You okay? Or down to this action, you okay?
I think so.
All right, Scott? Sir?
Yeah, I had a question for Mr. Schrader. Last time you were here with Mr. Thompson, comments were made, and not by you, but comments were made, that your authority was limited to only doing what was allowed by the DCM. And, and this was in discussion with the other Hill, the other plans, and I was wondering where, where I could find that authority, or where I could find that limitation on your authority.
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, I do not know. I don't think of, trying to think of the right way to say this. I don't believe it's a matter of authority, if you will. We're talking about relative to the DCM.
Yes, sir.
The DCM is a, is a document that the design community uses in developing projects. When an element of any given project has difficulty, I'm trying to speak as generally as I can, has difficulty with a particular criteria for whatever reason, in other words, the designer, the project team feels the project, or an element of the project should advance in spite of a contradiction with the DCM, if you will, then a variance is applied for. Some people call it a waiver, but I believe the right word is variance. And the, I believe the code, and don't ask me where, but I believe it's always been the practice that the municipal engineer be the one that acts on the variance.
I, I.
Okay, so I'll stop there.
Number one, the definition of variance talks about a legal authority, and so I disagree with you on variance versus waiver. But my concern is that we have a section of the city that is out developing community plans, and the city is spending hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on the development of these community plans, and there are expectations by the public on those plans, and yet we appear to have another section of the city that doesn't feel they're bound by those issues. And I, it's going to come before some board or commission to, to start to develop an order of precedence, and, I mean, I argued this for 10 years under Title 21, so it's, it's a critical issue here, how we balance that. And I think it needs to be balanced in a way where there's certainty, because sometimes it seems we go one way, and sometimes we seem it goes the other way, and that is perceived as unfair. And so I think we need to get to the heart of this matter and try to do that. And yet it was offered by Mr. Thompson that your specific authority was to follow the DCM and not these other adopted plans. And I'm just trying to use this, a little bit of the time this evening, to understand that issue and to work for a resolution of that issue.
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson. I believe we're all trying to get to the same place. The design team typically turns to the Design Criteria Manual, let me back up. I think of the plans, you know, Official Streets and Highways Plan, the Hillside District Plan, other plans, as setting a direction, if you will. And, and I am not an authority on plans, so I'm just trying to share my perspective with you so we can get to a common point. Then, when a project is planned and design work starts on it, you know, if, if it's for a road, a certain type of road, we turn to the engineering criteria in the Design Criteria Manual to come up with a resultant project that meets those, the plans, the Official Streets and Highways Plan, other plans in the municipality. We've commonly, I mean, I have commonly referenced to other plans, you know, used to be the Anchorage Trails Plan, and I think it's still a viable plan, but now we also have the Bicycle Plan and the Pedestrian Plan, that call, that call for whatever type of trail or facility that a road might have. But the, the criteria for where that pathway or sidewalk might be tends to be laid out with greater specificity in the Design Criteria Manual than in plans. I, I don't, I'm going to stop there.
Commissioner Spring?
Yeah, now, since we got to here, and it's cold out, you don't want to go home yet, I'm a little confused, I guess, between the relationship between the Design Criteria Man, Manual and the, what I would call the context-sensitive solution ordinance that was passed by this, by the municipality, by the Municipal Assembly. And I haven't read that recently, but I guess my general understanding is that, that's all, that is actually a law that is passed by the Assembly and not, and signed by the mayor. Doesn't that give flexibility to design projects, roadway design projects, that would over supersede some of the, the specific designations and recommendations in the, isn't that an overarching, a kind of flexible tool that you can use to, to, to design projects that might violate or exceed or not meet the standards of the Design Criteria Manual?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, a very good question. And I probably don't have a clear answer on that. I think of the context-sensitive design process as being a process of how we interact with the public to, to develop the scope of a project. And again, the, you know, the project still needs to be designed to. And again, the, you know, the project still needs to be designed to, to good standards or criteria, because the, the paramount importance, in my opinion, the paramount importance of the project is the welfare and safety of the public, the users. So, that, so the safety of the public is paramount.
Ms. McConnell, did you have something you wanted to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to recommend, I think, you know, there's excellent questions, and Mr. Schrader is here, but there are four commissioners who aren't going to get the benefit of these questions and the answers, so I was going to recommend saving your questions for the work sessions that you've requested.
I was going to make that same recommendation, sounds like we're getting into a work session, and we're not very, I mean, it is fair game, because we are, it is on the agenda today, but I think, I think we're duplicating effort. Ms. Youschmer, did you want to comment?
Nope, I'll save my comments for the work session. I would like to be able to attend the work sessions. I am not going to be here the week of February 3rd, just...
Just a reminder, okay.
Right. Some of you might want to have the work sessions without me, but I'd like to be able to attend.
Okay, I have a couple of things, do we need to schedule a work session?
I got one, one question. Could we get a copy of the context-sensitive design ordinance distributed to us, please?
Yes, I will do that.
All right, I think, thank you.
Distribute that to all commissioners, please.
Thank you, all right. Got a couple of things I want to talk about. Diamond Boulevard, I want to talk about next week's chairman, and did you want to make, just talk about a conditional use tonight, or was that?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. All right, so then, two things. I, as you all know, Mr. Spring, Commissioner Spring's been working on a memorandum addressed to the Assembly, copied to the mayor concerning the design study report for West Diamond Boulevard. I think you've all had a chance to review that. Are we okay? Are we ready to do something with this? Do we need a motion for me to sign it? Mr. Spring?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve and recommend forwarding the letter regarding the commission's findings on the West Diamond Boulevard upgrade project to the municipal assembly and the mayor.
I have a motion to sign this memo and send it to the Assembly and the mayor. I think everyone's had a chance to review. I have a second from Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion?
Mr. Spring, Commissioner Spring did a very good job summarizing it and putting it together. He's to be commended for his efforts. I think it's clear, I don't think it's argumentative, I think it speaks directly to the, to the heart of the matter, and I think it would help inform the Assembly what we, what we feel is a significant issue.
Okay, any other comments?
Commissioner? Commissioner? I am not able to vote on this motion, because I was not present at that meeting, so you do not have five.
But you have to have been present.
I think so.
Erica?
I don't know that you'd have to be present for a memo.
Mr. Chair, I don't think you need a motion to approve this letter. I mean, you've, you passed a motion earlier that you wanted to send the letter, you discussed how you were going to draft it, you followed those procedures, I really don't think you need to move to approve this.
We'll do that, I've signed it. Good for you. Everybody okay with that? Any, anybody really feeling discomfort there? Everybody okay? Okay, John? Connie, you okay? All right, all right, so then, Ms. Youschmer?
As previously discussed, Chairman Mulcahy and I both will be gone on February 3rd, so I would like to make a motion that the longstanding member Commissioner De, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ferguson, Chair of the meeting.
I have a second from Commissioner Spring. I think as appropriate, it should at least, that way we have somebody to convene it. If the rest of those guys want to throw you out next month, that's fine with me, but I think that at least gets someone to sit here at the beginning of the meeting, get the ball rolling.
Point of order. I apologize for interrupting, but the rules of procedure do say that the members, in the case of absence or inability of the Chair or Vice Chair, the members present may elect for the meeting a temporary Chair, who shall during such meeting have full powers of the Chair. So I think you're supposed to elect a Chair at the meeting of February 3rd.
So I think what we want to do is just make sure that, someone to hold that election, so that Jim does that? Or, put him as, put him, then he would host the election that night, or, because otherwise there's no one even there to convene it and start it. There's got to be someone to convene the meeting to have the election, right?
Well, I don't think, I mean, I think you can discuss it tonight, but I don't think it's appropriate to make a motion regarding it tonight. And I think Ms. Blake and I would, would make it work.
Okay, so you...
I'll work with the young ladies.
All right, you'll figure out a way to get, all right, so that's good. Then anything else?
I thought that you volunteered.
Anything else? Mitchy, Jim, John, Connie, all right, please, John.